A board decision, I say it's a little tricky people play, but you have a bond referendum, you go up three pennies or whatever it is to service the debt that was approved by the voters, assuming that it was. And in fifteen or twenty years, the bonds pay back, well, the pennies that were increased years ago don't go away, they use those for something else. That's generally what you will see. It's not always true, but that's generally what you'll see, but that's a board decision. And so that, does that make sense? So there's different types of, there's different levels and types of capital getting more difficult to fund, obviously, as you move down the, move down the list here. But the good news is, we've already built this into the, to the budget, okay? We are working towards reaching that 500,000 threshold, and we'd like to go beyond that. Then you get into these conversations, okay, on this major capital, what are we gonna do? We're gonna use our fund balance, we got four million dollars in fund balance, you wanna do a million dollar project, well, that wipes out, twenty-five, you know, that's twenty-five percent of your fund balance, that's gone. So you gotta be careful about tapping into fund balance too much, although it is completely appropriate to use fund balance to fund capital, just like you have done. Any questions on that so far? We're gonna, we're gonna dive in here in a second, so. Okay, just a general question. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about, can we pull up the next attachment? All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna dive into a five-year CIP now. These are all, the way this was developed was, I took a hundred and fifty million dollars that the COG came up with. Whittled that down to what the bare bone, just to give you an example, some of the things that were in the COGS, I didn't say this yesterday, but they had two million dollars a year set aside for sidewalk construction. We couldn't spend two million dollars a year building sidewalks. We, logistically, you cannot, we could never spend two million dollars a year building sidewalks. And so, so I've really ratcheted that, I don't know where that came from. City Hickory, we spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year building sidewalks. City Concord spends a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year building sidewalks. Waxahau couldn't spend two million dollars a year for the next ten years, I mean, two million dollars per year building sidewalks, okay? So, I mean, that's just an example. So I whittled out, I whittled that number down, I whittled some of the other numbers down, and I made some assumptions about what year some of these would fall in, but that's completely the board's decision on, number one, if you wanna do any of these projects at all, if you do, what year, you know, what might be a good target number, you know, as far as a budget number to plug in for that project, like, you'll see, I've got for town hall, I've got five million dollars plugged in. Well, down in Hill Trails, doing, doing a town hall, theirs is up to eight million. I don't think they thought it was gonna be a thing when they started out, but that's where it is now. So I made some assumptions on, on some of this. So, let's see. Well, let me go through the assumptions. So what you're gonna see is, so I took the five, the way this, this list was developed, it's five-year CIP from the COG, also our existing CIP, and also projects that I've heard mentioned and brought up amongst the, amongst the board, as well as, I've also plugged in the need, this whole idea of what we talked about yesterday, going back and fixing a lot of what's in the ground on the north side of town, and installing infrastructure on the south side of town that was never put in to start with, okay? So there's issues on both sides of the town in terms of existing infrastructure or lack thereof that need to be addressed. That is built in. That was not built into the hundred and fifty million dollar number that the COG gave you, okay? I'm assuming just a natural growth in revenues of about four percent that's gonna fund the personnel, the operational needs within the organization. You're gonna see, we do continue to rely on fund balance for some of the capital in this projection, assuming that we continue to grow. I've taken out, in this five-year CIP, I've taken out vehicles, radios, this is just the big stuff. This is the big, heavy-hitting capital, capital items that the board really needs to dive into and talk about. We talked about a penny on the tax rate produces a hundred and fifty thousand revenue, a penny on the tax rate services about 1.5 million dollars in debt, and I also assume that the town will continue to set aside a capital reserve, but I haven't, to show you how conservative my numbers are in terms of where the revenue's coming from, I haven't utilized any of that money for anything in here, okay? Does that make sense? So that's a, I don't wanna make some assumptions that we're gonna have a lot of money in capital reserve and then my, and that not end up being the case. So this is extremely, what the numbers you're gonna see are extremely conservative in a good way. So I'm gonna, we're trying to, we're trying to under-promise and over-deliver, is what we're trying to do with all of this. So, I do, I do recommend, in which we're gonna go through some installment purchase financing, specifically for, in a particular order, the downtown park, town hall, and public services, because all those projects exceed a million dollars, okay? But that's just, I mean, the board will ultimately decide if we do those things and how it's paid for, okay? That's not my decision, I'm, this is just a starting point for, for discussion. Those are the three areas where I would recommend bank financing to pay for those things. The cumulate in, the downtown park is done in four phases, four one-million-dollar phases, that's a four-million-dollar project we'll go through. So the cumulative impact of the downtown park is two and a half cents, okay? Divided into four phases over four years. I do not include, in these projections, in terms of revenue, I do not include any revenue from the sale of property. So, let's say the town wants to sell the gravel lot, I'm just, that's, and I'm just throwing numbers out, I'm not proposing that we would sell the gravel lot, but I'm just, as a matter, just as an example. So let's say we sold the gravel lot and we got a million dollars off of it. That million dollars is not included in these projections, just as an example, okay? Nor the sale of any other property with the exception of the sale, let's see, does not include any, Jim, so, yeah, also does not include the sale of property from the thirty-four acre park. Does not include any grant revenue. I think for many of these capital projects that we have, there will be grant opportunities. So that could be a plus to the town that I have not plugged in as a plus, but it would be a welcome surprise if we got grant revenue for some of this stuff. And then these last three things, in the five-year projections, I project a consistent annual financial commitment to town infrastructure projects, going back and fixing what's in the ground, going back and putting infrastructure in the ground, particularly on the south side of town that doesn't exist today, each year, every year. Consistent annual financial commitment to sidewalk construction, you'll see this, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, is what I would recommend, but again, ultimately, whether or not you wanna do that at all, and if so, how you wanna pay for it and how much is your, your decision. And you're gonna see a recommendation to the board to go through, maybe do an assessment first, but do a Greenway master plan and start funding Greenways in Waxahau, three hundred thousand dollars a year, every year, boom, 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 it's just like, you just know you're gonna, you're gonna fund that much and you're gonna build a Greenway system over time. And we'll go over some of these, go ahead.
Question, you talked about the financing, the financing, you, most commercial financing could get eighty, twenty, get the tiny out, you could be, you don't have to put anything up.
You can.
Hundred percent financing.
You can, yeah. Then there's different types of financing, you've got, you've got level principal, where your principal's the same, that your, your interest is more, then you got level payment, there, there's different types of financing, but none of them require you to put down money. You can, if you wanted to. Or what you would do, you wouldn't put down money, you would just finance less. Like, just, let's say you had a two-million-dollar project and you wanna put a half a million, you wanna do a half a million cash and 1.5 at the banks, you, and that's equates to funding that if you put it on the tax rate, a penny on the tax rate to do it, so that's the way you.
So any of the work that Dennis talked about yesterday on the infrastructure side is coming through, that third from the bottom?
Yes, right there. That's in here.
Okay.
That's the good news. And I'll share the bad news here in a minute, that's the good news. So, one of the things you're gonna see when we walk through this is a, it equates a lot of these projects to what it would take to, on the property tax rate, to either fund it straight, pay-as-you-go, or raise the property tax rate to fund the debt. So just philosophically, and I've never had this conversation with the board before, but this is like, one of the fundamental things that the board or commissioner decides is the property tax rate. Philosophically, what is your individual position on property taxes? Just a question.
Well, I see that we have the largest tax rate in this area of the county.
Thirty-six cents.
I don't know what Monroe's is, you know?
Fifty, it's up north of fifty.
They got a fire. Yeah, Marvin wedding to West the Chapel hardly have any tax rate.
Five cents.
Yeah. Okay, so we are, they don't provide the services we provide, but you're right, they, yeah.
To me, it's not as much the tax rate as what you're getting for it, and being able to demonstrate to taxpayers that their tax is being well-spent, whether it's two cents, ten cents, I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that that money is spent wisely and provides a benefit that the people here in Waxahau can see, sometimes touch, you know, the whole thing. But then I think you have to get out ahead of it and let people know that it's coming, what it's for, and, you know.
Where I'm coming from, I'm from the old part of the town.
Sure.
The reappraisals hit Hillcrest pretty good, I'm hearing from my neighbors, they, they're looking at a hundred thousand dollar home, they had ten percent increase in their taxes. They went down on the north side.
Something all hated something.
To say somebody that's lived there thirty-plus years or more, or over life, to say the tax increase, now, the people in the newer subdivisions, oh yeah, I have this, I have that, now, compare that to the people that live just across the line in the county, if we're hearing about it, they're saying, oh, well, I can get just the county taxes, not that other, what's their town tax, you know?
Thirty-six cents.
Thirty-six cents on top of my, you know, was it fifty they were there, or sixty was the county tax.
Your last point is very legitimate. I mean, they're gonna come and use the park. The points are, well, I know.
Why do I need to pay money?
I know, it's just one of those things we have to wrestle with.
Now, we quit over facilities, I mean, you go over to Rock Hill, you go to a city park over there, you go to the ones at Lake Mormon up there, they'll wanna see your, your address to see if you live in the city of Rock Hill.
Yeah.
I mean, and you will pay two dollars to get in if you don't.
Marvin does the same thing on their old park, I think, on Newtown Road, they, they lend it to Marvin Residence.
Of course, you have to put a person at the gate to do that, too.
But you can go to Charlotte, I go, I go to Freedom Park, Parkway Park, Lada Park in Charlotte all the time. Park, get out and enjoy the park, I don't live there.
Can I add that parks, there are other ways to generate residue on parks instead of charging people to go to them, it's the type of rec programming that you can put in the park, so you can have some capital out of the park. The downtown park in particular would also contribute to tourism and alleviating the density that we're going to see grow as a result of the apartments we have going in.
So, hear you completely, Jim? I'll give you the devil's advocate as you traverse Kirton or, or some of those up there, we pay another third in taxes called homeowners association dues. I mean, so.
That's choice.
That is choice. It is choice, but, but I'm just, we're putting it all out there.
The other part of it is, when you talk about infrastructure, when you buy a house and a community like that, you pay for it. You pay for the streets, you pay for the curb gutter, you pay for the sidewalks. Separate issues, what the developers got away with, and the lack of quality and so forth, that's tough everywhere, but.
That's unheard of in Hillcrest, I mean, it was a pits from, since it was built, I mean.
Listen, I understand, it's not them against us, you know, okay? I mean, that's, that's, we have to, I have to avoid, we need to avoid that, but, you know, yes, for a hundred thousand dollar Hillcrest home, if you put in storm drains, you put in curb and gutter, you put in sidewalks, will the county come back and raise their assessment? Probably. But there's no predicting the county, it was waiting. But the reason these values went down is if they were at 2006 and 2007 prices, I mean, our house we bought for 400,000, it's assessed at 510, where's the equity in that? But that was there for five years.
So you can raise taxes to pay for all the fun stuff, but you can't drive on the roads to get there 'cause we didn't pay for that, because they have to swim to there, because we've got water everywhere, puddles, or whatever you wanna call them, it's just, to me, I would only be comfortable with a tax increase for something that is, again, core or foundational. Anything else is, you know, working overtime at that point, and maybe, you know, folks, a referendum item.
Well, so let me walk through what's on the list, then we'll get, go ahead.
I have a better taste for a referendum, a bond, and the reason why I say that is, is to hold us accountable for, to stick to our guns, because if you ask for a bond now, you're not gonna ask for it every year, and that's what I think most of the population is worried about, are even gonna chisel us, they're gonna do it two cents now, they're gonna do it two cents later, and then a bond is supposed to be really closed out when it's done, and I don't wanna end up like the Thomas E. Dewey Highway in New York State throughway, it was only a toll road until it got paid off, that was in the 1940s, it's been paid off since 55. So, they're still charging tolls and it was a quarter, now it's five dollars, so.
So that's a great, so let me walk through what's on the, on the first.
I'm gonna have something.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to, your question about taxes. I'm not for raising taxes unless it's absolutely necessary.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that seems, but it seems like a reasonable position to me, I wouldn't, I mean, that's.
But, you know, the funding with bonds or, because when you, and to Fred's point, is communication and educating the public, they don't care, you know that, when, when the majority of the people are gonna look and say, you're gonna wanna pay my taxes for two cents, what they have, you know, and that's when they come back to us, you know, and say, why? And then you, you throw these different things out, and if it's for streets or certain things, and they're gonna come back and say, well, I don't use that, and, you know, it's a balance, but there's an, you know, with the election going on now, and Tommy Tucker, that's his big thing now, is keep low taxes. He's speaking, what, tonight, at the city tavern, the Republican thing, and he's gonna, that's gonna be his big thing, let's keep taxes low, so.
All right. Some of the things that are built in, this is, and what, this is FY, can't see, but this is FY 1617, and the way I've, well, the way I've typically done a five-year CIP is, is it's six years, because what you've got, you've got the upcoming year, which is FY 1617 plus five, does that make sense? So it's really, I call it a five-year CIP, but technically it's a six-year because it's the coming year plus five. So I've got, we head down the road of start identifying a site for town hall. In your plans, you have plans to do a three-year project of streetlights downtown, which will tie into the whole downtown improvement project. Eighty lights per year, so that's 240 lights over, over three years, plus or minus, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. If you were to, if you were to equate that to a, to a property tax rate increase, that'd be one penny for three years to do that, okay? I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that's, there you go. The tap grant downtown, we're gonna be able, we're gonna need 525,000 for our match, we're gonna be able to piece enough money together through the Pab bill and a couple of other pots of money that I don't think is gonna, we more, more than likely will not have, if we do have to get a fund balance, there'll be a relatively small amount, we're still working on that, but we're, we're putting that together. Okay, now you get into the pet plan, this is sidewalk.
So we haven't been spending money out of the Pab bill to fix the street?
Yes.
Okay.
We got three hundred thousand dollars sitting in, whoa, I think we got three hundred thousand sitting in fund balance for, for Pab building. So there's the pet plan, that's your pedestrian plan, that's your sidewalk plan. Well, you got a plan sitting on the shelf, we really, truthfully, haven't done a whole lot with it, and this would be a strong number for Waxahau to put towards that, like I said, Concord does that, Hickory does that, other cities did, every year, boom, 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 they're doing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year building sidewalks. Now, that includes buying right-of-way, you know, curb and gutter, it's, it's not just a matter of going out and building a straight sidewalk, there's a lot that goes into building a sidewalk, and how, how wide do you want your sidewalks to be? And if you want to equate that to property tax rate, there's a penny. We talked yesterday a lot about all the infrastructure retrofits, the statutory compliance for infrastructure that we're not fulfilling, the whole acceptance and the associated upgrades of infrastructure that we're gonna be looking at, you know, you've got minor road construction that we need to do, there is a tremendous amount, so we put 450,000 dollars a year to go into fund, to go into infrastructure improvements, and we can, we can come up with a comprehensive list, I mean, it can be something as simple as we've talked about connecting Waxahau Parkway to Utah Road, buying the property in between, making the connection, I mean, that's a simple example, having, that gets down to a public safety issue. Fire department on the Fourth of July came right downtown, right, right down, North Maine, right up on Two Wheels, you know, but going to Mill Bridge, but they could, if there was a connection on the backside, they could have, I mean, just a simple example, they could have avoided coming, having to come through downtown, but they didn't have any choice. So, so there's a, there are dozens of projects just like that, I mean, the, the list is, and the dollar requirement is endless, but, yeah, so we're saying, that equates to, 450,000 dollars equates to three pennies on your property tax rate, all right? So now we've, downtown Creek Park, downtown Creek Park's a great park, it's, it's under, it's, it's underdeveloped, needs some work.
It's underdeveloped but utilized.
Yeah, it's underdeveloped but utilized. So, plans to put in the CIP, money aside for Town Creek Park improvement, this isn't exact, so I put one penny on the tax rate, but this might be an example where, okay, let's take some of the capital reserve money we're setting aside and do that, and you don't need to increase it a penny. Are you with me? So, so there gets to be, and I could've listed those sorts of options, there gets to be other options on funding, yes, ma'am?
There's some creativity beyond that with Town Creek Park, we have about 27,000 set aside for when the town took that park over.
Right.
And so we had that checked, we also have a gigantic tree mitigation fund that can help with the landscaping of that park, so that park could get done at a pretty low rate.
So there's some options on that one. Develop a Greenway master plan, you know, we hear the, this new generation, their folks love their Greenways, we wanna get in the Greenway, but what form of assessment do we need to do to find out if we need to get in the Greenway business? Well, if we do, we need to do a Greenway master plan, but let's not do a master plan if we're not willing to put money into it to fund it, 'cause that's just wasting everybody's time. So, so that would be, there would be value, that I shouldn't say that, that's not a nice thing to say, you're not wasting everybody's time, there is value to having a Greenway master plan, if for no other reason, as grant opportunities come forward, they do give points to having plans in place, so I shouldn't say that, I mean, there is value to having a Greenway master plan, whether you put money annually into funding it every year or not. So, let's see, park, let's see, the YMCA, you'd asked about, so we've got a three-year commitment, 350,000 a year for field development, this would be year two, and downtown park design, so if it's a four-million-dollar park, a good engineering design number is 10%, that's a 400,000 dollar number, that, and if your fund balance continues to grow, you could, you could, you could take that out of, out of your fund balance to fund it. So that's just the first year. So, so back to the question of, and I'm not asking you, I'm not recommending, just for the camera, I'm not recommending that we raise the property tax rate, I'm just equating these things back to, this could be one way of funding these sorts of things, you could use a combination of your fund balance and increases on your property tax rate, or maybe some of the capital reserve money, or maybe a heavier reliance on fund balance, you gotta be careful with the fund balance thing, you can only go so far with that before you start, I mean, it could be addictive, I mean, you, you could keep, I've seen folks whittle down their fund balance to dangerous levels because it's easy to do, and they don't wanna raise taxes to do the projects that they, that they wanna do. So, how does, this is just, this is year one, we'll, we'll walk through the next year. How does that, how does that strike you? This, to me, this one, and this one, are, I mean, have any sidewalk construction planned, programmed where we are building sidewalks? We saw it yesterday, going back and fixing, fixing the infrastructure that's in place and making some investments in some, in some projects around town, you know, we saw it on the south side, we saw it on the north side, it's all over town, it's not unique to one side of town, it's everybody. Those are, those are very critical to me, I mean, just to look at, we're talking about your property tax, if I've got, if I want a house, and the street out in front of my house is falling apart because the town hasn't maintained it, what's that gonna do to my tax value? The house is the biggest investment any, any of us have, so, when I, when I look at revaluation, I lived through two revaluation cycles where the value of my house dropped, and what, guess what happened when I sold my house? The value of my house had dropped as well. I don't think that increasing property tax values is a, is a bad thing, 'cause I've lived on the other side of it, my house was worth about a hundred thousand dollars less than what I had planned for it on being when I sold it, I'm just living through two recessions. But, so, you talk about making investments to, to some degree, to maintain and enhance the value, not, not the tax value per se, but the market value of your house. So, I mean, it's pay me now, it's this pay me now, pay me later sort of conversation to some degree. I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
So, Jim said to me about a month ago, and you blinked your eyes, we're already a year and a half into the town hall, please.
Yeah.
Which we did for three years, with the option of two years.
Five years ago.
Right.
Yeah, so we're here into it.
At the end, yeah. So what I see here, so you got 50 grand going in the first year.
Right, site identification.
At the top, but at the bottom, we dropped 400,000 into a downtown park.
You dropped 400,000, 'cause it, and that's right, that's a great point, because the downtown park design is further ahead. Now, but from a board perspective, a policy perspective, if you wanna say, nah, we're not doing anything till we get a town hall done, then all this changes, then what you'll see is, you'll see that dropping off and clearing the way to really fast-track a town hall potentially, or something else.
Because following it down then, and you're not there yet for the next page.
Yeah.
You go into then, the next year, half a million dollars for town hall.
That's designed.
Right, but then a million dollars for the downtown park.
Because, timing-wise, the town has put more discussion, emphasis, money, since I've been here, into the downtown park than they have town hall. But, but if, but if from a board perspective, your priority is town hall, then that needs to be reflected on here. I'm just going by based on, because we don't, I mean, they've got conceptual, I think there were some conceptual plans done for town hall, but I don't think anybody was real excited about them as far as what I can.
That was prior to this board?
Yeah, that's off the board.
Okay, so that, that's why, so if you wonder why you're putting, and that's a great question, why you're putting the downtown park ahead of town hall, well, because that has been the part, from the, all the discussions that I've had, that has been the priority discussion, and the downtown park is further ahead in the process than the town hall conversation is. But we can, that could be completely, we can bring up, so, so what is your, what are your thoughts about a town hall? 'Cause that's, that's the big, that's the biggest one on the list, that's gonna be a, and I just threw five million dollars out there, I don't know if it's five million dollars, I mean, it could be four, it could be eight, like, any drill.
Town hall's a simmering issue.
Yeah, five years ago, that was a big issue.
But I'm still going, so, so we're at 400,000, the next year we're at six percent, a six cent tax increase for a million.
Right.
The next year, we're at another six cents tax increase for another million.
Right.
So up to 2.4 million, and then that's when we finally hit capital on the town hall at half, at five million.
Yeah, so the third year out.
For the three cents, so now we're up to 15 cents, or, yeah, 15 cents tax increase.
No, that's not, no, that is point six on the park, it's a point, it's, it's, it's about a half a cent, it's not six cents.
Okay.
It should be point oh oh cents.
Yeah, it is, okay.
Okay. All right, but your point is, I mean, I, I get that, so your, your point is, and that's a board decision, do you see, and apparently it was a big conversation in years past about town hall, about all the, about where, was it gonna go across the, the street from, well, I think recently they lived.
Downtown, downtown the gravel lot.
Gravel lot.
Wolf property.
So where is the, where is the board on a town hall? 'Cause that's the one, that's the big one, that's the five-billion-dollar project that I've got on there, the downtown park comes in number two at four billion, but that's, and that, I will tell you, that will have to be financed, to some, I mean, but we don't have five billion dollars, so that's three pennies on your, potentially three pennies on your tax rate, unless our growth rate really takes off, and then it may be less.
I think you undersized the amount of money, because the way the previous board talked about it before us three got elected, it was gonna be a minimum of 11 million dollars for that building, and it was 28,000 square feet, basically, we're only occupied about half of it at the beginning, but we're gonna end up taking over the whole building, just like the police department does, it expands into a fifty-year program, and I, I don't think you have enough. And I, I don't think you have enough money, I think you have half enough money.
Okay, so it could be a 10 million dollar, right, so that's six cents.
I think that, to me, we were doing what John says, we're driving the Ferrari and living in a trailer. Because we rent a house, basically, we rent our own house.
So, I think, given what we heard yesterday, and given how far along we've come in three, four years, I think, before we can even discuss anything, we have to do an assessment of what the, the space needs are.
Yeah, we're doing that.
Because the space need, that was fed, that totally out of date with context of offices today and, and things like that. So, you may be right, he might be right, or might be another number, but there's a neat, there's an assessment phase that has to be done very, very quickly.
Just, we are doing some preliminary, just so we get in a position so we can talk intelligently about it, but we're doing some preliminary, because we realize, we, the clock's ticking, so we know we're gonna have to do something.
But to, to your point about the assessment of the staffing and the, and the way it looks, currently we're not doing anything different than that, and if we hire more staff, we're gonna start double stacking.
Yeah, yeah.
Or doing whatever.
Yeah, so when we do the assessment, we'll have to do a projection, this is what we anticipate.
But I mean, what I'm saying is, is there a culture for doing it differently than the way we're doing it today?
That's the point. That's what, that's what they have to go and assess, what's the culture for an office space for going forward?
Yeah, office space versus open workspace.
Open workspace. But do you see that changing though, is my question, I guess?
I see more open workspace.
So you, you, the, the current model we're using is not what you'd like to use in the future?
I don't think that it's needed in a lot of, I think, I mean, everybody has an office great, but I don't know that everybody needs an office. I mean, that's just a modern, different way to.
Yeah.
And, also in the former plans for the town hall, there was restaurant space, retail space down, and if you look at that same plan now, kind of what you said, you have to take all that out, because you need it now.
Yeah.
Or because the town has grown and your status has grown.
I, I don't think you're smelling french fries coming up through the mince unless it's gonna be a, I mean, I just think it needs to be a, it needs, I think, if you're gonna have a town hall.
Fried chicken?
I don't know, that sounds, if you're gonna have a town hall, I think it needs to be a town, I mean, it needs to be a little, a level of integrity, you're knowing you're coming into town hall, you're not having retail uses, and then, because you get these retail uses, you may get one, talk about retail you don't want, somebody wants to come lease a space, and you say, well, we're not really interested in having.
ABC board.
Well, and too, with that, with the, the, the look and the architecture of that, the cost it was gonna be downtown on that corner, that added a lot of expense, so if, if, that's not where it's going to be, then you can, you can save money by doing a different type of building that doesn't have to fit that main street.
And I, I, one thing I would say, not having done an assessment or anything, but I think, I do think that downtown more than, needs to be, the down, the town hall needs to be downtown. I mean, eventually as Waxall grows, on the, particularly on the south side, that is going to be the center of town. That, I, you just, typically, particularly in the south and other places, I mean, that, your, your town hall's in, in downtown area. But that, that's not my decision, that's your decision.
So, but what I'm hearing from you then is, is you need direction from us, either yea nay, and where does this fit on that scale?
Yeah, so, we know the clock, you've made a perfect point, the clock's ticking, we got four years, we got time, we need to start doing something now, uh, but yeah, so I need to know your thoughts on it, just generally speaking, what sort of direction would you like to give me on?
And you're already starting to do an assessment of, of needs?
Yeah, like, this is, this is where we are today, this is our space needs today, over time, this is what we anticipate growing, because we will grow, um, and this is where we're gonna end up in, you know, 2030 or 2035 or whatever, um, and how much space are we gonna need? And it, and it probably won't be a scenario where everybody's got a cookie cutter type office, I mean, some folks will, but.
And I would say, your assessment of needs is only a part of the assessment that needs to take place, and there's a lot of thought that's gotta go into this before you even talk to an architect. Yeah, and that was the problem before, they started, the architects were driving.
But the, the thing with the assessment of needs though, is again, are we assessing today, tomorrow, this weekend? Are we gonna do 20 years out or 50 years out, or we never touch it again?
I'd like to point out that.
You're comparing five million and Indian Trail, they own their property.
Oh yeah, that's a big, that's a big, so, we own the route a lot, we own the Niven Price building, and we need to look at some of the, and we need to look at, do we need to look at buying something downtown? Or somewhere else? Could it be?
I don't see any way around that.
Yeah, so where, so what's your vision for, what would be, so you have?
Well, my assessment of the whole scenario is that it took the previous board three years to decide on an architect, location, uh, having a multiple actually community involvement in it, and really never got anywhere, because it just never got together. And we only have four years left with our extension on our lease.
Right.
So, we really need to get on track now.
Okay.
To at least get the site selection and what our needs are, along with the public input, because if we're gonna ask for five to 10 million dollars for a building, the public's gonna have to have some intro into it, because it's gonna cost them some money.
But here's the other thing, we can't think of town hall in a vacuum, we've got all this other stuff.
Right.
And so, we think about, okay, yeah, we can do three or four pennies for a town hall, okay, can we do three or four pennies for all these other needs?
Well, and, and again, I, when I say that, I'm not thinking of it in a vacuum, I'm just thinking of it, what's, what's needed and what's wanted.
Right.
We have a downtown park. I, I, I don't think I've ever been down there where there's a waiting line to get on a swing.
In the field behind, it will be a park.
I, I, I get that, but we don't have a town hall, we don't have public services, we do, but we don't have, what, you know, again, you talk about what we do at home.
Right.
I can't, in my mind, put the Ferrari in the driveway if I'm renting or donning the house.
So for you, so the big, so the big stuff we'd like for you is spending really any money on the downtown park before we really get down the road of addressing the town hall?
Well, that and the four foundational, certainly the ones at the top, I mean, again, I'm not ignoring that, I need that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's, there's just, again, prioritizing the list of what needs to be paid for.
And just, and just so you're clear, when I roll that, I'm not married to any of that, I'm married to whatever you want to be married to. So, that's, that's what, that, so that, that's great, so, any kind of differing opinion from the board's perspective on what Commissioner Hunt just laid out?
I, I, there's nothing wrong with paying a rent, okay, it's, it's, there's nothing wrong with a public-private way for lease purchase for 10 years, I mean, we can do it over a long period of time, there's ways to cut back on some of it, yeah.
Right. Yeah, just wait.
I think to John, I'm sorry.
I think we can look at, um, the property that we have, like you said, are we gonna use that property? It's underutilized, I mean, not the fourth lot, I mean, most of the time it's underutilized. And then the, the other building, are we gonna use that, or are we gonna sell it that could go toward the town hall?
Right, Jim.
I mean, I know that's all part of your assessment of what the need is and everything, but, um, for it to just be sitting there doing really nothing.
Yeah.
Matt? Matt, just kind of a base. I, I just wanted to point out that the last time, um, the board pulled together the, um, plan for a municipal building, they, staff was not involved in that at all, as far as space needs, and we would have been out of space the day we moved in if it had gone forward the way it was. So I'm just asking that, um, staff be involved in that study so that we can.
Can I get some clarification, are you referring to the downtown property, or the other thing that was?
The downtown property.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And, and when they did bring us in after the fact, um, we were able to identify, as we met, positions that were gonna be coming up, some that have already been filled, and it just clarified or verified that we would have been out of space that very day we moved in.
Too much, I'm going to sort of agree with John, because to the way I think about it, what, when, the first money we spend, if we're going to set a priority, should affect for most people. And to me, the infrastructure is much more beneficial to people than a town hall, when, as Jim said, we have options on a town hall, I mean, I've built buildings for lease and so forth, and that's an option we have. We don't have to buy a town hall, we can lease a town hall, we can zone some land somewhere and get one of our current developers or somebody else from outside, build us a town hall, it's done all the time.
That's called Kirchen Town Center?
No.
That's what it was, though. Before we all got here, that's why it was called Kirchen Town Center, we'll build you a town hall and hand it to you.
Right.
And the current board said, hey, that's a great idea.
But they didn't follow up.
Well, because it moved town hall out here in the middle of the field.
Understand, but if we know where, kind of where we want it, we can go get a developer, it's just, like Jim was saying, we don't have to buy it. But to me, it's, the first big money we spend should benefit the most people in town. Town hall doesn't benefit anybody except the people in this room. And people who have been going without for five, 10, 15, 20, 30 years should be booked to first.
But to that point though, and we were always told right, wrong, and differently by previous management, previous whomever, when folks come to look at this town, they don't want to pull upside the trailer, come in and have a conversation with town manager about bringing my business to this town.
Took back to Jim.
We're not saying that.
We're not saying that at all, yeah.
But I must say, just to change the direction here, maybe get one step ahead, I don't think main street is an option, we, we have, we're just exacerbating the parking problem.
Correct.
Nearby, a few blocks, nowhere for south, it is an option, where we can provide parking, but where that was going before, that was a catastrophe.
Correct, and it was wasting really good retail area.
Not only that, if, if, if we have another train derailment, and this time it's chlorine gas.
Yeah.
You guys have no chance whatsoever.
Do your good thing.
On that upbeat note.
But you got all the businesses down, I mean, what's happening right now is the assessment.
Yeah, so, we're trying to figure out what our needs are gonna be, so then we can be in a more, we can, just to talk about, how big does this need to be, where does it need to be? But, but there's some fundamental questions are gonna be, you know, in the assessment of dropping costs to some degree, but prioritization, you know, because we are talking about, I would, I would anticipate for a four million dollar park project, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to borrow money, okay? For a five to 10 million dollar town hall project, we're gonna have to borrow money. Maybe not for public services, depending on how that works out, I mean, but that's no, that's not a cheap leader. But those two.
We about to run out of places to believe.
I know, well, we're, we're.
You want to be a public every day.
So, but the, but those three are the three babies, but then, I say they are, but then you get into all, then you, so now we're talking about all the things we want to do moving forward, new town hall, new park, new public, new public services facility, and now how about all this stuff going backwards and fixing? We cannot forget, we have got, we're gonna have to address.
And I'm okay with that.
I don't know what the number is, but we're gonna have to address it.
I'm okay, because again, that four or foundational items, as Fred said, that addresses the mass. You know, it affects Hillcraft, it affects Lawson, it affects Kir, everywhere it affects. It addresses, and I'm good with that money.
Right.
It's just, I think we'd have a hard time going to somebody and say, we're gonna bump your tax rate up because of this.
Yes ma'am?
To get prioritization, I would say, take the town hall design and bring it underneath where the public services is, push everything back up to the top, and then take the downtown park and put it near the bottom, and then that's the prioritization in my mind.
Okay, well, just, just, I was just gonna say, if you go back to the last time we really got a survey, it, obviously keep the safety, so keep funding the police, streets and infrastructure, traffic, those are the top three. Um, I mean, that's what that is, and that, and I don't, I don't hear anybody saying that we're, they're hearing anything different from anybody that we need to keep, keep doing that. But I will also tell you, right behind that was the quality of life thing around, starting to show progress around parks, greenway, and I don't know what progress is, I don't know if it's four million, or if it's four dollars.
When you put, I think the way I look, when you put, they broke it out differently, when you put the parks and the events together, I mean, it's just like.
Then it's like that, yeah.
It may be like the number one.
But I treated it, I just kind of did it differently, because we're already doing events, right?
Right, yeah.
And, I think we're all kind of getting onto the same bandwagon, and to me, what Paul said a few minutes before about referenda and bond issues and so forth, we need to do the infrastructure, we owe it to the citizens of Waxall, we owe the infrastructure. If the citizens of, and, when you get to the town hall, do we owe that to the citizens of Waxall? Parks, they want them, I mean, I think those two issues could actually be put before the voters. You've said you want them, are you willing to pay for them? You know? Don't spend their money without asking them specifically, do you, you've said you wanted parks, here it is, it's three cents.
And of course, I, again, just a average person, citizen taxpayer, whatever, four million dollars for a park? What, are you putting gold fixtures in?
Well, yes. And anybody that's been in a PTO knows how expensive that stuff is.
Okay, but I'm talking about, I'm not talking about an average citizen, go knock on the door.
I'm not talking about the people that want the park.
Four million dollars.
The demographic of being 36, 38, they got kids, they're participating in that, they understand the cost of what it is, what it takes to put together a park.
Two things happen, one is, if we go to a referendum for a million dollars, before we have the referendum, we're gonna have to take a lot of time to.
Exactly.
Get the message across, here it is, this is what's proposed, these are the benefits, this is, you know, and go through that whole explanation period, and if we don't do a good sales job, it's gonna, it'll fail.
Yeah, now let me put the other caveat, the other thing on it, you got the state doing a bond at the end of this year?
Mm-hmm.
You got the county trying to do a bond on, on school and on infrastructure, and then we follow that up.
Right. Or all the same.
Or, I mean.
It's all been on the same, maybe on the same day.
Maybe on the same day, yeah, so, I mean, we really.
Because you can only do them certain types of times.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna ask you, we're just gonna do it.
Well.
No, 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 no.
It's the timing maybe went off.
It's the ti, I'm just getting to the timing.
I'm with you on that.
But sometimes it's best to put them together though, because once it, either sink or fail, once everybody's on for this, they're on for the other two also.
But they're all, yeah, we're too late for this shit.
Well, but, but if people.
The governor made sure of that.
If people are sour on the school system, and come in with a bad attitude about schools and vote against the school, they may just vote against, the Waxall folks may, or they may vote for it.
Waxall will vote for schools.
Okay. Yeah, well, that, and y'all know that.
Yeah. So hopefully they're successful this year with schools, and we follow them up if they're successful. But you're, yeah, it's timing, timing, timing.
And truthfully, oh my gosh, so, you know, when we did this, and it takes, I don't, we would have, the earliest we could do one is in the fall, and with all that it takes to reach that point, I don't know that we could get one done this year.
Yeah.
So you're, so, now what you're look, now you're looking at the, more than likely So you're, so now what you're looking, now you're looking at the, more than likely, the following year or up. It used, used to be able to do them anytime, the state legislature changed that. Now it's only primaries and general elections, I think, maybe not even primaries. But you may be looking at the next November, which is.
Colleagues.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm just saying, I mean, I don't know. I mean, we'll, we'll have to get some, Parker Poe out of Charlotte, their bond attorneys, they do this sort of thing. Scott Leo is one of their attorneys. He worked with us. I could get him down here, he could walk us through the whole thing.
Natalie.
I am, sorry. Stallings Park, if you're familiar with Stallings Park, which a lot of our citizens go to and love. And when we were going through the process of the downtown park and what folks wanted in the downtown park, they basically said, give us another Stallings Park. Stallings Park is a $4 million park, and it was phased in, and they just completed their last phase. When businesses are looking at Waxahau, quality of life is up there. They will look at the amenities that you give your citizens. So in addition to looking at a town hall, parks are high on the list. The south side, we're doing a lot of improvements on the north side of town for those citizens, not so much on the south side of town. So that's something to consider. Also, the tourism element, that it can bring, a downtown park adjacent to the downtown is an opportunity to bring foot traffic to the downtown. Parks are also known to increase property value, and the master plan asks for it. So I, I of course will love to see it, but I understand there are priorities. But we have the train pretty, you know, the board had directed the advisory board to go through the concept process. So if we're going to delay it, I would want to know how, what stage we need to get at before we pause that project till such a time before we pick it up.
So if you wanted to consider a bond referendum, is what I'm hearing is that you would want parks, greenways, sidewalks in a, in a bond referendum? And then just the basic infrastructure, town hall not? I mean, meaning it would be funded in a different way? What am I hearing?
I think the reverse.
The reverse. So town hall, public services in a bond referendum?
Right. Because that's not for the public, that's for us. And that's, that's.
Okay.
How do we manage it? The town hall in particular, that's.
So town hall gets voted down?
That's a dollar item. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a jewel item. That's, that's an accessory, that's not really necessary.
Public services, I'd say we fund out of what we got because it's statutorily, we're, we're violating.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we got to do that. I wouldn't put that on a bond and then, oops, not what we do, they say.
So, one of the things that happened in Durham, they put a bunch of stuff on a bond referendum and it failed. And they went back and did it anyway. You imagine how popular that was. I mean, but they, they showed the leadership to do it. They said, yeah, we took it to the voters. They said, no, we need to do it anyway. So there's a, there's a, but, but, so you've got a town halls, like in one category, that we eventually know whether we, we're going to have to have a new town hall. We know that. Then you've got these parks, greenways, sidewalks, that we, I won't say we don't have to have, because I think we do. But if the, if the public folks know on those, which I wouldn't think they would in this community, but the consequences of not having a town hall and running out of space and, you know, the efficiency, inefficiency of what that would create, I mean, I don't know. That's a, that's a tough. Typically, what you see is greenways, sidewalks, parks wrapped up in bond referendums. Typically, you don't, you wouldn't see a town hall necessarily. I mean, I'm not saying you don't see that, or you, you definitely wouldn't see a public works facility, because that's all, that's core kind of infrastructure stuff.
So to Brenda's point, I think we have to really get our arms around our existing, all of our existing real estate and either poop or get off the pot with it. Because we've got an investment and a lot of it's sitting there idle. And that shows we might not get it, you know, I mean. And I think that feeds into, feeds into this. You know, it could generate some significant dollars that could alleviate this. Or it might generate repurposing that, such that we can get by at a lesser cost. I think Parks and Rec is in a difficult spot because there was the investment made by previous boards in this board in land. And now the question is, we got a lot of property sitting around and we can do anything with it, but we're just going to sit on it for five, and we have to make that decision. If we can't afford to do it, then we got to tell people we can't afford to do it. On the 34 acres, the Godfrey property, Nesbit Park, I mean, forget more investments there. I mean, we've, we've got existing property that's underutilized. And, and we've got to decide what we want to.
Right.
Convey.
Yeah, it's not in the tax.
Yeah.
It's not creating any taxes for the governor. Paul?
We have a downtown park design, and I don't think everybody's really thought of it as stellar. Maybe I, I thought it was okay, but it wasn't stellar. Is it possible that we go back and revisit that along with the town hall needs and incorporate both together? Because it's within the downtown area. And that's where we want the town hall. And maybe we could fund a downtown community center conglomeration in that park and make it a community place. I, I, to me, I think a, a town hall would be nice to be inside of a town park. To me. But, you know, I think that's what, the vision of kind of what Waxahau likes is having, thinking out of the box and having. I don't know of anybody around that has a town hall in a park. And I think that's really one to me, because we're saying we're promoting a healthy lifestyle. We want our community involved in our town hall, because it would be a town hall community center. Is that possible?
I'm just throwing that out. I know I'm probably throwing it out left base and screwing the thing up. But that's a possibility, because we were having a community center in there, and we would just have to make it maybe taller. And you understand what I'm saying?
What's your good call is you're, you're, you're starting the conversation for the analysis, and you're starting the conversation for a program to give to architects, engineers, to warrant, say, this is what we want. We have to come together and say what we want. And we have, you know, proposals for town hall that's been all over the place. And that's part of the problem. Nobody ever pulled it together and came up with, you know, aligned it with a vision. And we have to, what is our vision for a town hall?
Well, first, it starts with, it starts with the needs assessment.
Yes.
So we can even decide.
So we started, we've taken the right first step.
So, so let me ask you if this is generally what I'm hearing, just without making any final decisions, in no particular order. So there's an agreement that we, if there's not, let me know, but is there agreement that we're going to have to put some money in infrastructure, both fixing what happened in the past, or fixing what happened in the recent past, plus putting in what never happened to start with, which is a different issue on different side. Is that, now we get, and I'm not committing anybody to property tax rates or anything like that, but just generally speaking, yeah, we need to take care of our infrastructure.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah. Okay. And again, I'm not committing anybody to any, okay.
And is transportation part of that infrastructure?
Um, miller drive, is that transportation? I mean, I mean, what, sidewalks are transportation.
Sidewalks are. You've got some of the streetlights and stuff.
Yeah, I don't know if I could comment on it, but is Waxahau Parkway? No, that's not what it is. Yeah. Providence to 16? No, it's not what it is. So I would say, yes, transportation is.
Yeah, okay.
What would in there? Sidewalks, do we need to establish a program? Would it be, is there any opposition to the concept of establishing a program that on an annual basis, we would be funding the installation and construction of sidewalks? Now, I'm not committing anybody to property tax rates or anything like that, but is that, I think I, I have, I have heard around town, particularly around some of the schools, we saw it in, in Hillcrest, the lack of sidewalks. Is that?
Yeah, I think, I think I'm in for sidewalk, when you do a, some kind of sidewalk program. And every year we do this section, we do this section. In my community and, and Old Hickory, they just want a sidewalk down Prescott property so they can walk downtown.
I'm assuming sidewalks are already in Waxahau, because you did a pedestrian plan. And so there had to have been something that brought that about, so, and.
That was a previous board.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Definitely. We're, we're, we had an agreement with them on that one.
Okay, all right, there you go. Yes, sir.
So you mentioned $2 million for sidewalks.
That came, that was in the COGS 10-year plan per year to implement the comprehensive sidewalk pedestrian plan. And we can't do $2 million a year for 10 years building sidewalks.
$2 million a year, so $20 million?
Per year, yes. And I'm rounding, but yes.
So we put a number up in front of the folks at an open board meeting.
I don't know where it came from.
That true budgeting process.
Yes.
And then that gave the total of 150-something million dollars. And we got people running for the hills screaming, what are they trying to do to us?
Yes.
What was the value in that?
Well, there was a lot of value in the, in the, they got the information from us.
So we told them $2 million?
Yeah, we told them $2 million. They didn't make it up.
You took the plans, John. You took all of the plans, put together.
And I'm rounding. It's, some years it's 1.7 million, some years it's 2.3. But yeah, it's about $2 million plus or minus a year for sidewalks.
So that's not true budgeting then?
Well, it was true budgeting from their perspective, because that was the number they were giving.
Numbers, yeah.
Numbers.
The value is, you've got it all in one place, and you've got an opportunity then for.
I don't know.
It wasn't based upon what could be done. It was based upon, here's what the plan said that we had to go do, and gee.
Like wish list.
Yeah, and, and it, sort of a wish list, but, but the part, it was originally ignored in the true budgeting. And Greg went back and said, why the hell did we do this thing if we're not going to put it in the budget?
Yeah.
They didn't have anything other than little bar charts to say when this stuff came due, and so it was a guess, didn't it?
And if you know, as far as building sidewalks, we didn't, we didn't get into right away acquisition and the design of it and putting in Kirby Gutter and store. It is, it's not just going out here and putting aside, it's, it's, you can't do $2 million. We, we could not, we couldn't, we couldn't do $2 million worth of gear in sidewalk construction. I don't know where that, that, I don't know where, where that came from. But, but the, but the overall point is sidewalks are important. And we need a program in place on an annual basis where we know we're building sidewalks. Are we, is anybody opposed to that concept? Okay.
So we do the ones that are most necessary for now.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to do the needs.
Yeah.
Why do you need to go first?
Yeah, it's protest.
Right. Where, where it came from was there was 40 million total. They cut it in half.
Oh my gosh.
To say, hey, like we can do half of it in 10 years, and so what, you do the math, 20 divided by 10?
There you go.
We'll average 2 million a year. It wasn't done based upon what we could accomplish work-wise. I mean, it was, hey, we need to get it in the budget. That's what they do.
All right, so let me, okay, so we've talked about the basic infrastructure and sidewalks. Uh, greenways. Now, we don't have a greenway master plan. Do, do we need, what is your, where are you on greenways? The concept of greenways, the town funding greenways, I mean, that whole, just general philosophically?
This is thread trail, greenway.
Yeah, could thread trail weaves into that?
It weaves into it only insofar as what's reflected on the master plan map. Anything, they're not going to give us anything outside of that. You can ask for a variance to the map, but you can't add to.
But that's part of what would be a greenway system?
It would be part of it, but it's very general right now.
Like Prescott has.
Thread trail is actually sidewalks in places, I mean, runs around the water and road.
Just so you can walk.
There had been some talk about, some of the communities have trails, opening them up to the public.
Yes.
And then.
Prescott, for example.
Quellon.
Yes.
Kuratton, connecting the park over to Anklund Forest.
There's existing infrastructure that can be linked. There are certain areas of Waxahau that the thread trail is more interested than others as far as future grant opportunities. And you also have some volunteer projects that can play into building out a true trail network. So there's a lot of great potential on that.
When was the master plan developed?
The sidewalk was 2012.
The park?
2012.
2012.
It was developed and approved in 2012.
We approved the parks plan, I think it came on us, didn't it?
Mm-mm.
It was 2012.
It was adopted in 2012.
It was adopted in 2012.
Planning board.
So, well, I was on the planning board when that was through.
What is the time table for completion of the master plan?
Well, it's a 10-year master plan.
Everything was to be funded by grants.
Well, yeah, everything was to be funded by grants. One of the first orders of business was to draw the Parks and Rec department, which is set started last year.
Second order was the Y.
Yeah, the Y was one of the immediate things. The downtown park is one of the short-term goals. But it, it already is, we have like bits and pieces of it checked off.
They called for where our 34-acre park is, and called for a 10-acre park?
Yes.
So we're, and so we're heading that, so we're slowly, you know, cobbling that and trying to piece together some accomplishments with the, of course, the management.
And to Natalie's credit, what she's trying to do with the advisory committee, I think you're still trying to do this, is go back, because what the master plan didn't account for was any of the parks and amenities that homeowners associations have that would take away, mitigate some need. And so we're trying to go back and factor that in.
But you're not going to pay your extra 3% tax, or whatever you said you paid extra, to let me come play in the park?
No, not, not necessarily, but, but the master plan assumed all citizens were equal, so allocate space for me who has a pool over here in my.
You're going to let me come to my pool now?
Yeah, huh?
You're going to let me come to my pool? Because I got my beach now, and I can put about over.
If you drive down Kansas, you can bring a six-pack.
And they do have a press code, you just can't wear it.
All this park.
Okay.
You can have free access to.
We keep it open year-round, John. Go ahead, have a, have a.
Yeah. I'll be over there.
Is there a little heat in that water?
Nope.
Anyone wants to go in?
Keep going.
Get a little ice on top of it.
Okay, all right. So, so greenways, would you, would you like to give some direction on greenways? What, let me take a timeout before I get into that. What does the Parks and Rec master plan say about greenways?
It says we need to develop the greenway master plan. And that would have been, and it was developed, it was adopted in 2012. Within the short-term, one to five years, that should have been developed. So you had an immediate list of priorities. It had the downtown park. It had the installation of the lights at Harvey Clay Nesbit Park. It was establishing the Parks and Rec department, developing a formal partnership with Louisiana Waxahaus, which we're working on this year already. And that would become park space, that's a specialty park. They have about 22 acres there. The YMCA was a big checklist item. Skate park, that was taken care of already. And so then in the one to five, that's where your greenway master plan came in.
So I guess the question, in following your master plan, are we ready to take the next step with greenways? It says develop a greenway. Develop a greenway, or do we need more preliminary work ahead of time? Has that been done? Are you, do you want to give direction to the Parks and Rec advisory folks that?
Could I ask you, I'm confused. What exactly is a greenway? That's what, compared to a trail or?
That, sometimes that is used interchangeably, but greenways are often paved a little bit wider. They're a little bit more multi-use, but you do have people calling natural surface trails, greenway.
Typically, that.
Whereas we go to the greenway up at McCalpine in Charlotte, that's a greenway. It's a gravel path, you can bicycle, walk wherever.
They're actually being used as alternate transportation. Now, it's like Charlotte is doing a cross Charlotte greenway right now, which is awesome. And you're going to see people choosing to go to work that way. So a greenway, like I was saying yesterday, with synergy is good, because it can play into our transportation. If we have good connectivity, some people can, and especially millennials that we're trying to attract, you know, start choosing to, to get to where they need to go that way.
And you can use utility easements and all that.
And Union County said they were open to us talking to them about that.
Yeah, it's a good behind air.
Yeah, Union County's open. Carolina Thread Trail is pointing it out of corridor banking to give us a, a grant on. So there are a lot, there's definitely a lot of opportunity in that. The Union County, Union County redid its master plan a year ago for Parks and Rec. That was the number one thing people asked for, and that's Waxahau also, for Waxahau stats.
Okay.
Yes, and, and that's actually a nationwide trend right now.
And this would be a good, when we do the community survey, this would be a good sort of thing to, you know, get feedback on?
There's also a small pot of money through DOT that can support greenway development.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking on your chart here, the, so for each year for greenway, that's $300,000.
Yes, yeah. And that's, that's, that's to develop a pretty robust and comprehensive, after we develop the plan, the implementation is, yeah, but we're going to, we're going to do double time on installing greenways. That would be a recommendation.
So that's town, that's not grant money?
Right. It could, there could be some grant, but, but I would anticipate most of that being, being town money.
Okay, so, so for the next five, if we do that over a period of five years, it's 1.2 million dollars.
Yes, yeah, right, right.
You know, I'm, I love the idea of that, but 1.2 million dollars, and we're, when you look back at what we're wanting to do with parks, what would 1.2 million dollars do to develop the parks that's just sitting there now? Not that I'm against the greenway, I'm just trying to.
That's a great question. You're balancing out your needs. We don't have money for everything.
Right. I think the parks are more important than the greenway when you're talking about 1.2 million dollars every five years. Just, just my thoughts on it.
But building out a park does not mean we have to put all site furnishings in at the time we build it up. So there's, there is something to be said about opening up space.
So the two parks that are the most, I say imminent, not imminent, but furthest up the list are the downtown park, we've had the most car, then the potential of the 34-acre park, or what will, you know, come out of that. And making some, some Town Creek Park improvements.
Yes.
And maybe some.
We're looking at Nesbit Park right now to see what we, what we really can do with the rest of that property. That property has some serious floodplain issues. So we're actually getting ready to start a site plan update to say, what's the rest of the opportunity? And at what point do we cut off investing in that park?
So is, so is, so is the greenway money either reduced to do a lower amount and more of that money, or just, you know, so those are completely, you know, core-type decisions on how you want to.
So are we, we talking about?
Are we, we talking about using the money that we're setting aside, the two hundred thousand dollars a year for that greenway?
Could be.
Or are we talking about going out and borrowing money for greenways?
Uh, probably not borrowing money. I wouldn't recommend borrowing money for greenways. It'd be a pay as you go. Either you could say, yeah, we wanna, we wanna use all of our capital reserve money to go into greenways or park development or something, or we wanna do, we wanna use that, you know, use the capital reserve money for that and raise taxes for something else, or, or not raise taxes for anything. So there's a million combinations.
I think we really need to highlight the items that we would think that we would borrow money for.
There's three, there's three.
There's only three?
Town hall.
Town hall.
Downtown park. And maybe public services, maybe not.
I wouldn't like that.
Well, there you go, so there's, there's two. Everything else, everything else should be a pay as you go, unless you want to do a bond referendum for sidewalks and greenways. Then you're borrowing money, but it's, but it's the people saying, yeah, raise my taxes to build sidewalks and greenways.
Sidewalks and greenways essentially can be spread out.
It can.
I would like this, but I'm gonna settle for this this year and next year.
Right.
So, I see no reason to put in a bond definitely.
Well, and the difficulty with the bond is you have to have all the money spent within seven years. I don't think you could get an extension, but, but basically you gotta have, so then after you've done your greenway projects, you're, you gotta go back and do another bond referendum or?
To me with the bond, the choices are, we're asking the citizens of the town to decide. It's parks, it's greenways, not necessarily sidewalks. Okay, I mean, sidewalks are safety issues, and I don't think you should put that in the crap sheet. Town hall, that's, I mean, but I think parks and greenways are, would fall more into that bond referendum.
And you know, you gotta, you gotta think in a town like Waxah, I mean, folks are gonna vote for, for, for greenways and parks, depending on how you package it up.
That's, that's the way you do it.
And generally what you'll see, what we learned going through this before I came down here was, the, the bond referendums that fail are the ones that get organized opposition. Who, I, I can't see people getting organized to kill parks and greenways.
That'll be very tough.
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough one. I mean, you know, school bonds, I mean, that, that gets real controversial and that sort of, but, um.
But, so, the five years we got here, seven point eight, eight million dollars on parks, greenways, and with parks, I guess.
Yeah.
Back to the, versus two point seven million on infrastructure improvements that you've identified.
Right, but, but most of what's driving that number is the four million dollar downtown park, which was, the board has said is something that, we have at least given the indication that you won't pursue.
Well, yeah, because we went through a site plan process.
So that's, I'm just going based on, I'm, that.
Yeah, it's been in the works for.
Yeah.
Really neat.
Yeah, three years.
It was on my priorities, that, that, the board said, you know, let's do, let's develop the, y'all had a direction from a previous board about developing plans for downtown park, came back at seven million, and I said, well, everybody said, you need to get that thing a little down, but, so we got it down to four million, but that's just based on what the, what the board, the direction that we've been receiving. If you wanna put the brakes on and say, we'll take a timeout on that, and we'll put some other things ahead of it, then.
So if we send John on one more cruise, we're. I'm asking a question that I'm surprised John hasn't asked. It's nowhere on the five year plan. Do we have any exposure in the next five years on fire?
No, we don't.
You don't think that, you don't think that's coming our way?
I, I think, I think ultimately we, the exposure, I would want to find exposure, yeah.
Costing us some additional money that we don't know about right now, that's.
To me, I think the exposure would be the, the downtown water, the water supply in general. We don't own that. I think we, as a town, would have a better shot at the county than the volunteer park department in making something happen about that. But it's been told to me that if there's a hydrant downtown that they won't turn on for fear they won't turn off. You know? Not to mention, not to mention the fact that, you know, again, reality is, if, if one of those buildings lights off, that block's gone. And it's not because.
We could replace or have paid to replace it.
It is not because, well, I'm not certain of that, the hydrant particularly, but.
I mean, if the board wants to replace the hydrant, we could.
Oh, the hydrant, two thousand dollars?
Not much, or less, yeah.
I'm not familiar with any of that.
But, you know, that'd be my only thing on that.
Okay.
Not only the hydrants, the water pressure to that hydrant is way out of hand. The hydrant's that bad.
They could reduce some pipe downtown and change the water.
But, well, all I'm getting at is, as we talk about trying to build a town hall downtown and build a park downtown and bring more people downtown, is, you know that exposure exists, is that something that we have to partner with and it's a cost that we don't even, we haven't even projected yet that some tells me would be?
Depending on how we would staff, if we took over or partnered with the fire department, depending on how we would staff it, staffing anywhere from Mint Hill, just full-time staff at one point eight to two point something million dollars just for that, and that's not including any apparatus or the building facilities or anything like that, that's just personnel.
I just wanted to add to your list.
No, that's, yeah.
We'll get into big battle like Spontua over in wedding.
Well, no, we'll do everything we can to avoid that. I mean, cause that was, that was politics at its purest form.
All right, so, go ahead.
You mentioned earlier that we felt like the town home needed to be downtown, do you have any ideas of where, have you looked at?
On, uh, well, I would look at the property that we owned first. Um, but I, I just think in general, I, I'm not latched in any specifics on this.
Is this something that should be in the public, I mean, it should be a closed session to talk.
I mean, we could talk, I just think, I was just talking generally, I think that generally you see, you see town halls in the downtown. And that's, that's what I would say, but as far as a specific location, I don't, I don't have any.
I don't like to choose.
Well, yeah.
That's why I was asking.
There's something within, within five hundred yards of downtown Main Street, there's, there's lots of.
You think less than a building is far?
I mean, Waxah Park was one.
In the county?
And that's not too far.
So we got, so we got yes, we got yes on the infrastructure, that's, that's a priority. We got yes on, conceptually, the sidewalks. I think on the, on the greenways, did we get a yes that we wanna, did we get a yes on the, on the pursuing the master plan as the Parks and Rec master plan calls for? Or did we not get, did we, do we want more conversation about that?
Well, so my question is though, isn't this now a fear of mine, I guess? So we say yes on the greenway, and they develop a master plan, that's the foot on the throttle, the board said do it, and next thing you know, we've got a greenway system in place because the expectation was, according.
Right.
That, well, you said do it, so we're doing it. Versus, are we exploring it, are we getting here, put it out there and let us know how much it costs?
We can do a master, we can say we're gonna do a master plan with the intent of coming forward for a bond referen- referendum.
That was my understanding of the site plan for the downtown park.
Okay.
How much is it gonna cost? We don't know, we gotta do a site plan. Okay, we'll do a site plan. That was my thought. Now, tell me it's seven million, well, how long the hell, well, you know, originally, seven million.
Right.
Oh, that was a site plan, okay. Thank you for that, you did a site plan of seven million. Now, it's forming and I get that, but my concept of moving forward is, is doing whatever it takes, but that doesn't, full throttle down, we gonna buy the product.
You're, you're correct, and part of the assessment is a site plan or a master plan. It doesn't equate with full steam ahead, but before you can make an informed decision, you need the information. That's what a master plan gets you.
Right.
And no one can fault you, or Brendan, or Jim, or Steve, or Paul, or me, or Warren, or anybody in this room, for being prepared. That was the fault that we're trying to get over.
And I'm good with that, just as long as I can clear in my mind that if I say I'm good for the greenway plan, it's not, well, y'all, go ahead.
I think, what I would say is, if you go for, if you say, yeah, go forward with the greenway plan, I think that, yeah, that what you're saying is you would like to see greenways in the community. What I, don't go forward with the greenway plan if you don't wanna see greenways. So.
Greenways with a cost that says it occurs today because it's ten bucks.
Right.
Or it occurs next year because it's twenty bucks, or?
And what it would probably be is something like this, that animal will be similar to what the pedestrian plan is. It's a huge plan, but you're just gonna incrementally bite pieces off as you go through. The same thing would be true with the greenway. So we're not gonna say go forward with a, you know, four million dollar greenway, I mean, we're gonna say we're gonna build a greenway incrementally over time, put money aside.
But you're prepared for it, to your earlier point, if you have a plan in place, grant money does become available.
Sure, yeah.
Paul, but I just wanna make sure that we don't do like we did previous, we do the same history, repeat itself, get a plan, and then not react to it, not putting funding to it. That's part of the thing. We know that there's gonna be funding, we already know what the funding is before we even have the plan.
But Paul.
So if we're gonna say, we're gonna get the plan, but then we're not gonna do it, it's just like the Parks and Rec master plan. We got the plan, it's been on the shelf, what, five years?
Well, we've done, we've done a few things.
We've done a few things on it, and we're, we're chiseling on it, but we're not capturing the massive chunk, end result. That's what, that's what the public is asking for. They want some end result, not a plan right now, and another plan, and another.
Right.
They, they're, I, I hear it all the time.
Yep.
They want, if you're gonna have a master plan, where's the park that you told me about? Where's the greenways you told me about? Let's not do the plan and not react to fund, cause we're gonna have to, we're already committing if we're gonna do the plan, we're already committing, how much was it, Brendan?
One point two million.
One point two million above that.
Right.
So, over five years, so we have to commit to it, so that's where I think we're at. We're not, that's part of the analysis part, is the funding too, it's not.
I guess, Paul, my question to you though is, is the planning, or the, the word plan is, as we've defined, or has been defined to us, is like you, you mentioned, you know, sixteen plans on the shelf somewhere, that the town bought over and over again. I, are we equating a plan to a purchase contract versus a plan to an assessment or a detailed research for us to give us more information?
Yes, that's the answer, the short answer is yes. We do want the plan of the detail how we get there, but we want the money to back up. We, it's like, like I go out and I'll buy a set of plans to build an eight thousand square home, and I don't have the property and I only have a hundred and fifty dollars in the bank. What, what's the use of doing that?
So, so in that vein, if, if you're asking me, you're right, Paul, park and rec, we had a master plan, instead of following the plan, here, park and rec advisory board, here's a hundred thousand dollar, put in the damn dog park. I mean, that's what was going on before you, I mean, that was before you and you kinda stepped back. I look at this and I'd say, okay, our expert has a couple of things here in terms of Town Creek Park, the YMCA field development, let's get a couple of things done so we can show value to the thirty-sixth century already getting. And then perhaps, no disrespect, defer the greenway plan a year until we, they start getting the ball rolling on, on showing some accomplishments, cause if we're gonna ask for a tax rate at some end time, or a bond, or whatever, we gotta start showing value we give to the citizens now, and the roads are won.
Yeah.
And that's what I hear all the time, what do I get for my thirty-six cents? I get garbage, and I get brochures in my garbage can from time to time.
You get police.
You get police, yeah.
Street law.
Not, not everybody.
As I said before, I, I know that greenways and parks and, and kind of merge, you know, it's a good idea, but, um, I think more people will use the parks and the promises that we gave in the greenway, and I just think, I agree with Steve, we put the greenways on hold, and let's do something with the park, with at least one or two, let's do something because we've got too many, got too many goals, here we are again, like we talked yesterday, we've got all these goals.
It's a great way to put it.
And we're trying to do everything and push all this into one thing, let's do something.
All right.
Let's do a park.
Yeah.
Or two parks.
I completely agree. I was surprised that I got handed a park concept plan coming out of the gate. We're starting a brand new department that never existed any before, before. And the project that I did not initiate with the YMCA, which is awesome, and I'm glad it's going well, the bridge, the suspension bridge that's getting ready to finish up.
Who is she been?
Huh? We got that grant just as I was coming in, so they're like, here, build the suspension bridge.
Who submitted it?
Uh, planning, Lisa McHarver got us that grant. So that's a really good thing, so we built a trail last year too. Um, we've actually got a lot done, but to have a lot of this stuff happen, and you're saying, boom, we have a new department, well, what, what does that mean when you say you have to have a new department? You know, all the infrastructure that goes with it, a handbook, how it's done, everything. So I don't disagree with slowing down on some of this stuff, I simply took my marching orders and worked on these things, downtown park with the advisory board, but there's a lot of infrastructure that still has to be built just to have a proper Parks and Rec department.
So this is good, so we're gonna take a timeout on the, on a, on a greenway master plan at this point. And we can, you can always come back midstream of one day, if you say, okay, now we're ready.
I think.
Okay, that's good, that's good information.
I think you're okay to do that because you have, you still are, you have existing greenway opportunities within the town.
And I want, yeah, that's what, there may be some opportunities that we come forward with the, the one that keeps popping in my head is the greenway along Twelve Mile Creek behind the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
As we develop the YMCA, that may, may be one where we come back with a, you know, a mini plan, say, we would really like to do.
You already got part of it.
And partner with the town.
Donated to the town.
Exactly, I'm sorry.
We have a couple of opportunities Natalie and I have been working on with the museum, that they would let us use their facilities for part of the thread trail, so there may be some connectability that we may need some money to enhance the entrances, correct Natalie?
Yes, the back end.
But it's not major money. Probably we could take it out of fund balance. My vision is that we kinda put a hole on the master plan for the greenways, but let's not put it indefinite because that's what the millennials look for. My daughter, that's what, she doesn't go to parks, she goes to the greenway over there by Trader Joe's in South Charlotte. She lives in Indian Trail. She drives there to walk that greenway and run that greenway.
Well, I think you're going after the downtown park.
And I think that the, the parks and the greenways should be one in the same, and I think we, we will have to look for a bond referendum. I don't think we should just go out there and just say we're gonna raise your taxes as much. I think the public needs a.
So, I think the consensus is that we're gonna get our feet under, so what we've So, I think the consensus is, we're going to get our feet under us on what we've got going on, get some momentum, and then we'll come back and we can address...
The things are, we have low-hanging fruit. I think we could do the YMCA out of the fund balance and get that done and get that part in place, and they'll see we did something. Just let people, you've got to think about this, John. A master plan is not to be confused with construction plans or site plans. It's a very big difference. And to, and I understand exactly what you said, to go from a master plan to full-blown plans with no, you know, oversight, that's a mistake.
But, that was Paul's point, though, that we've got all these master plans and we're not funding them.
Correct.
Well, that's not what the master plan is for. The master plan just tells how much it's going to cost, in my mind, unless I'm wrong.
Dennis?
Well, yeah, I would offer this. So, most master plans that I'm familiar with, whether topically it doesn't matter, what I mean is greenways, master plans for college campuses, so on and so forth. A lot of master plans I'm familiar with are not laying out the vision, all right? So, it's, that's kind of the first phase of what do you want? And a lot of times, costs aren't linked very closely to the master plan because it's really about what is the vision from whomever's laying out the vision. Then there's this interim step, I would say, between master planning and construction documents. And there's multiple steps because the big interim step is the feasibility. And feasibility, the feasibility piece, some call it feasibility study, some call it project planning. Because at that point, you have a master plan lays out a vision, now you've identified a specific thing, a building, a greenway, a structure that you want to build. In between that vision and what you decide as a project, you test the feasibility. How much is this going to cost? What obstacles are in place? You look at those numbers, you test it against the master plan, and you say, "Is this project still feasible? Or do we look for alternatives?" And I think that's the step where I've noticed a lot of communities get frustrated between master planning and construction because there's a jump from master planning to construction instead of the feasibility piece and signing costs to it. And I mean, that's my biggest observation for me in this conversation we're having right now.
So, then, that interpretation, though, is saying, "Well, then the master plan is the bible, and if we're not doing it, then it's not, then we're not, we're not living up to the master plan, therefore, we're faltering."
Not necessarily. So, the master, the master plan, again, the way I'm defining it, at least the way I understand it, it's a pretty big, here's what we want, doesn't really matter what the obstacles are, this is what we want. And so, as we start moving from kind of vision to implementation, that interim step is, okay, given what we want, now let's look at our constraints. What could we really have?
So, the checklist format is not necessarily applicable. That, hey, well, we checked Y off, we checked this off, we checked that off. We've got other things we need to check off, so we've got to continue on that plan. The feasibility never came in that, maybe we can't do this.
Well, I wouldn't even go as far as can't say, "How much is it going to cost?" And then from there, when, how do you start assigning priorities to what do you, what do you do first based off of maybe costs, maybe some environmental considerations, maybe you have property owner issues or property issues with land acquisition? When you really start going from vision plan or master plan to implementation or physical construction? There's that huge step. And it happens, quite frankly, on every project or planning effort I've been associated with. I don't think it's one, it's not unique to what we're dealing with here in Waxall. It's very common.
So, just a couple of thoughts. I think, well, from a feasibility standpoint, feasibility was assessed. As a board, we put her in place. We kind of went through the plan and said, "That's viable," and we made a commitment to staff to bring it forward to fruition, the park, the park plan. If you're going to put a department in place, you did, you put a Park and Rec department in place.
Yeah, but that mean, does that just carte blanche, whatever it says in it, we're going to do?
No, but it's a commitment that you think the plan was feasible and that you're going to move forward on it.
But, that's not what I heard Dennis just say. He said individual components of it test feasibility.
I get that, and that's, she's doing that. But, that plan is four years in the making, and it culminated in a director being put in place and a department put in place and policies and procedures put in place and funding and operation, this operating capital that you, you know, and all that stuff. So, we're down that path. That said, I don't sense in this community that they want, right out of the chute, for us to build, especially after the gas station, one more master plan that we have to try to integrate into all these other things that we have going. That's, that's, I'm, where Brenda is and I think where I heard the consensus. Greenways are important, but let's get a couple of things done and show progress to the town and come back. She's already got enough on the feasibility side to, I mean, in terms of out there, and some things that, some wins to the town, I think. That's, that's what I think I'm here.
Yeah, the master plan is a vision, although there are certain things that you can check off, like partnership with the Museum of Waxall, well, that's not an easy one. But, I mean, so there's, you can go down the list and say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah." There's going to be things on there that we will never accomplish because they aren't going to be priorities or going to be too expensive.
Yeah, and quite frankly, over time, I know this is a tough concept, vision can change.
Yeah. And it needs to be updated periodically, the master plan.
Yeah, I would recommend updating it with, maybe within the next two years.
So, it's current.
Maybe include a greenway plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I know what you want.
I would ask you to think about not throwing out the master plan concept with the bathwater. Yesterday, we all looked at this, and we all looked at this, and this was a very important element. Roads are much more important to our success than greenways. But, a master plan lets you know where you want to put the greenway, should we decide to develop something in the future. Maybe the part of the development is the section of the greenway.
I don't, I don't understand what you mean, but who's throwing the master planning out with the bathwater?
The idea of not doing a master, delaying a master plan on greenways, okay? If you see a need for greenways in the east side of town, it's relatively undeveloped. If you have a master plan in place, and somebody comes in to develop that, here it is. You've got Waxall Park, and you've got all those other things. And you have something for the staff to use to say, "If you want to develop housing here, you're going to have to save some land for the greenway."
But, I think, I don't think anybody's throwing out with the bathwater. What I hear saying is, we heard yesterday, "Let's get some of these other things integrated before we build one more plan that is out here that's empty," that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand.
And the rally is...
But, don't be too short-sighted.
Well, it will be, it will be your...
Hang on, I'm not being short-sighted. I'm not saying, there's nothing short-sighted about it at all. We've got a, we've got a, that's not done yet.
Understand.
Transportation, let's get, let's get some of that done. I didn't, nothing short-sighted about it at all. Yes, Brenda?
I'm going to say this, I'm not going to say anymore about the parks. We have the Downtown Park. We need to get that Downtown Park done because I'm telling you, the people, the 777 people that I talked to that voted for me, they want that park. They want that 34-acre park. And if we can do whatever we need to do to gain revenue to get that, the lock off the gate at that 38 acre, 30, 300, that's two parks. And that's something that they want. And I'm sure a lot of other people do, that I didn't talk to. But, I know that many people want parks. And if we can do those two things, then that's huge.
Right.
Done.
I agree with you. I've been preaching that for all I can get, so I'm done.
I want to follow up with Brenda. I think, I mean, just right in my side, John, so. The 30, the Downtown Park and what Fred said to Y are our two. I think the 34 acres is going to follow through no matter what. So, those are the most visible, visibly politically correct things to approach right now. And, you know, the Downtown Park, it's not going to be anything we're near, but we've started it.
Yes.
And people are looking at that, it's been sitting there for five years now, let's move.
One thing that I can do to help the park momentum is doing, I was thinking about doing a year-end review article that talks about what has been done since Parks and Rec started, which actually is a lot of stuff. You're going to have your first cross-state connection bridge for the Carolina Thread Trail. We built natural surface trail. We have a skate park upgrade that, we had $20,000 worth of a skate park upgrade donated to the town, not out of the town's pocket, other than fixing a fence and putting some new trash cans around it. We have a YMCA land purchase, a park starting. We have a 50-year agreement with the, 55-year agreement with the YMCA. A purchase of a pocket park for the future on the east side of town. Department infrastructure, we have a department with an events division in it now. The events, as we know, are very strong. We have a lot of professional development that happened in that, in that department last year. Just a substantial amount of department planning, because again, to my point, we started with basically this master plan. And I will say, I'm grateful for the master plan with all its works and hairs and all that. It was really helpful in establishing the department because it gave me a picture out of the starting date of what has been asked for and formalized in a plan that the public had input on. So, though I know we'll never check everything off, I certainly was able to say, "Well, the immediate needs that have been identified are these. What do we need to go for? Okay, in the next one to five years, what do we need to go for?" Understanding we had, we were on a three-year lag time because we didn't start the department till a few years after the plan was adopted. So, I'm personally grateful for the plan because it was helpful getting things up and running.
Y'all want to take a five-minute break, and then we'll wrap up this and...